I'd like to say good evening and welcome to the Columbus Municipal School District's Board of Trustees meeting. This is our regular meeting. Today is October the 11th. It's approximately 6:05. This meeting is officially called to order. We do have an established quorum here today according to policy BCBFA. The quorum is, the board members in attendance is Mr. Frederick Sparks, Dr. Joe Schumay, Mrs. Talisa Young, Dr. Cynthia Stewart Brown, and myself, Yvonne Cox. We'll ask Dr. Stewart Brown if she will offer the invocation.
Please bow. Dear Lord, we come to you this evening first saying thank you. We thank you for new mercy and grace that you have bestowed upon each of us this day. We ask you to bless this meeting and each individual as we make decisions regarding the Columbus Municipal School District. And we will continue to give you all the glory and the praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we go into moving to our agenda, I would like to say a few words to our district. First of all, congratulations to the Columbus Municipal School District, the principals, the teachers, to the students, parents, support services, district administrators, and the fellow Board of Trustees. All of you have worked and your work has paid off. Our district's accountability rating is now a C, and this is worth celebrating. Thank you. Likewise, some of you have made major strides and moved, and some have moved and moved a letter grade in your schools. But very notably, some of you have made very good improvement and growth. Your perseverance is an inspiration for our district. You are, I, we are, I can say myself, as well as I believe I'm speaking for the board members, that we are all very proud of you. You have earned all the rewards coming your way. It is with great respect that I extend my appreciation and acknowledging Dr. Sharila Bach for her leadership, the research-based educational resources that she brought in, and her steadfast administrative devotion during the onset and continuous COVID crisis. Words cannot express our appreciation and acknowledging Mr. Dennis Dupree for his unwavering and knowledgeable work ethics, a level of administrative experience that our district is truly benefiting from. And with that, I say thank you all very much for all of your work. Moving on to item three, the adoption of the agenda, policy BBB, policy BCBD, requesting a motion to approve.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mrs. Young requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Brown. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. The motion passes. Moving on to item four, the Board of Education, policy BCBD. These are in approving our minutes for September 7th, September 12th, and September 17th, requesting a motion to approve our minutes.
So moved.
The motion is made by trustee Sparks, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by trustee Brown. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. I look over because I'm trying to tell the difference. And now we're at the trustees' district review. The trustees traveled, although we did not travel, we did attend the policy conference from the Mississippi School Boards Association's agenda. Dr. Schumay?
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Yes, this was on September 19th and 20th. You may recall at that point, Jackson was having a little trouble with, with its water supply, and we had the option of going virtual. So Ms. Cox and I decided to go virtual on this one. It was a very useful conference. I mean, a policy conference sounds sort of like a drag, but this was not. I would just like to touch on a couple of things. It was basically a day and a half conference, so I'm not going to give you the whole thing. But on the early bird seminar, the first day on Monday, outstanding speaker I thought was James Brinson, who is the deputy director of Homeland, Mississippi Office of Homeland Security. And he spent his time speaking to us about some of the things that actually have come to pass in this district, like the swatting that was done last week, talking about security issues. And I would like to suggest that we explore a little bit further and see if he could come up and work, maybe Mr. Dupree with, with our staff. Basically, he talks about, he talked a lot about the security plans that we put together every year. And he, his office would provide tabletop exercises, how to, to see if the plan actually works. And I think that's, given the atmosphere these days, I think that's really something that we could possibly look into. Do you have the assets to make a plan that in theory looks like it would work? Do you have that actually with, you know, lockdown so you can actually do it, how to respond to threats? A possibility. Ms. Cox, you might want to elaborate a little more if you want to. The other speaker that was outstanding was Tommy Henderson, who talked on board protocols and norms. And this might also be a possibility for us to invite her to come and work with, with the board. Basically, I can sum it up, I think, in a nutshell by saying that what she talked about mostly were formal, agreed-upon standards and expectations between the board and the superintendent. So get everything set up, get everything in writing, have it on the website if you want to. But this is a way, so there are no misunderstandings about who does what. And I think that we're at a point where, since we're between full-time super, or you're more than full-time, excuse me, Mr. Dupree, but between, when we're between superintendents, to be able to put into place procedures, policies, norms, things like that, I think it would be quite interesting. So those are the two things that really stuck out to me from the conference. And I'm sorry that all y'all couldn't been there because it was really good. I have to confess, I wasn't expecting it to be, but it turned out to be absolutely great. Thank you.
Turned out to be a lot better than we expected. Well, one thing that, and our district always gets Austin Gilbert, he's over policies, and our district always gets the policy information straight from Austin. And like Dr. Schumay said, it really kept my attention, and maybe I'm a busy, busy note writer like she is sometimes. But we had, I'm going to stroll on through because I don't want to do too much. That we're talking about ethics that we're all aware of. And I'm going to move until Tuesday. Tuesday, I sort of circled this, and I think this is something that we're already on, is State Board 2430 with the $40 million for schools and maintenance. But what stayed out, what stuck out with my mind that you don't use it, but not for athletics. So you're, I'm thinking you're already on it and aware of it, but I made a note of that. Although Sandy Hollowell did talk about budgeting, a budget operating calendar. And I sort of compared that with our calendars that you give us when we get ready to do our board sessions. And we were on, on道with that. And one thing she did mention, Dr. Schumay, after approval of the finances and the reports, that all financial reports become a part of our minutes. And I just wanted to be sure that we go back and check that, that all of those become a part of our minutes. That's in our minutes that we usually review. The, and they said something about for technology. And I've never heard of this, but we may be already doing it, have a MFA in place. That's a multi-factor authentication. And what this is, is it helps reduce security risk. It's security technology. So that's probably something for us to look at. I, what I'm going to do is pass a copy of my bad handwriting in my notes. I'll make a copy, Mr. Dupree. Hopefully you'll be able to read through it. I had, this was part of my intention is to just make copies so that the other board members that were not able to attend also will be able to read it. I won't go and read any other notes, but it was very, very interesting conference. Our board members, you all have any, any comments, anything that you all would like to make? We're going to move on. Discussion and consideration for capital improvement, CMSD. Oh, I didn't even see Mr. Little. Good evening, Mr. Little. How are you? Good. I'm doing fine. Thank you.
Over the past month, we have gone through and updated the capital improvement list. For y'all, there, there are two items that, since we've turned it in, that has been completed since then. The metal sheds over at the high school, we had a PO for that, those items, and we never could get them moved. So we canceled that PO and found someone else. So on the first page where it says about the sheds, that has been completed. The sheds are gone. On the last page, where it says the pressure washing at the middle school, that has been completed also.
Okay.
That information will be reflected in the next timeline that we give you for the next board meeting. We will make those corrections for you and have it updated as we move through.
Thank you.
There are several more reports that were passed in, the emergency maintenance, see, the routine maintenance, and the additional campus improvements. See if you have any questions on those reports.
Dr. Schumay?
Actually, I don't have any questions, but I really like this new format. Thank you so much for working on that.
Yes, thank you so much. Yes, thank you. The format is awesome. Can I ask you one question real quick?
Okay.
I was looking at the top of it, and remember the, I'm thinking it's already been done, the handicap ramps for accessibility? We were, you were looking at them at each school?
There were, some of them have already been completed. What we did was just came out on the end of it, smoothed them out and made them a little better. Some of them we're having to look at a little differently because the ones that are there, if we, if we take them up, we have to change, it's a foot for every inch of the curb that goes up. And some of them will stick way out in the parking lot. And the problem with that is, is they're not really a problem, but there is at the other end of like the sidewalk, there is a handicap accessible ramp there, but it's like these were put in extra.
Extra.
So as I look at them, they're going to stick way out into where the cars and the buses come through. But what we have done is gone in and smoothed the edges off of the ones that are there. Some of them we have completed, you know, torn out and put them up to ADA specs. And some of them we've just kind of smoothed the edges to make it an easier incline.
Okay. I'm thinking, oh, years ago at Cook, there was a class that used to come right out that side, that side door right there.
On the northwest end, we've had that one completed. And even did the, the grading that was there, we even filled that in upon request.
That's great. Board, do you have any questions? Moving on to discussion of the Hunt Campus Recovery.
I forwarded you an email that Mr. Gill sent this, well, it's around 2:00. You should have received that. And it, and it described the next steps. I don't have it in front of me, but it tells you the next steps.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, he said he talked with Kenneth Myers from FEMA in the funding for repair for Hunt. He said the process is still moving forward, and he think everything will go fine. And then he'll get with MEMA. So everything looks like it's going, going forward.
Okay.
And I'll get a chance to give him a call tomorrow just in case he wasn't able to put everything into the email.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schumay.
Appreciate it. The Hunt building transactions, were you able to look at the financial transactions board? At this time, I'd like to request a motion to approve the transfer of $6,865.56, the interest earned on the account to, from 30, I mean, yeah, 3028, transfer this to Fund 1122, the teacher incentive pay program. Requesting a motion to approve, removal.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mr. Sparks, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Young. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving on to item four, contract renewal updates. Board, do you have any questions, concerns with the contractual renewal updates? Moving on to number, number five, consideration and our discussion to approve the trust, the Board of Trustees' school visits calendar. Requesting a motion for approval.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mrs. Young, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? You have any discussions, board member, any questions?
I have a question. Now, with the dates that we have here, are we locked in for those dates? Or can we schedule, you know, other dates?
Well, I think those dates were your board review dates, so we just plugged in.
Gotcha. Okay. Since we dropped the review, we go with?
Right.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you.
So will the board, the board will still be at liberty to contact Mr. Dupree and the principal to, to do board school visits on your own, if you like to do that individually. But this is a way also for us to visit the schools and get our board hours in. Any other discussion? If no other discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Motion passes. Moving on to item C, goal updates policy BA, looking at the student attendance reports, the student attended reports. Board, do you have any, uh, questions, concerns at this time? Dr. Schumay?
Yeah, um, I am a little bit concerned about the, uh, the page that shows attendance where we've got more, equal to or more than ten absences. It looks that, as if that's about eight percent of the students, if I'm doing my math right. And of that eight percent, half of those are from Columbus High School. It's almost fifty percent of the, the students. I don't know what, um, plans we have to, you know, work, work through that.
Are you looking at, uh, the suspensions?
No, no, it's, this is, this is the one without suspensions and I'm trying to find it. Student attendance report, yeah.
Student average daily attendance?
Yeah, it's the, it's page, it's the third page, number of students with less than or equal to ten absences excluding suspensions. And if I read this correctly, the second column, the total number of this type of student is three hundred and eighty-nine so far that have this, uh, equal to or greater than ten absences. So that's, you know, that, that, um, that is a bit concerning. It was a jump from ten for the month of August and now it's up to, it jumped by three hundred and seventy-nine students. So I just, I put that out there, uh, to, it's sort of a red flag that we may wanna look into that and figure out if they're, not we, but Mr. Dupree, if you could sort of.
Okay, we'll look into that and have a report for you for the next board meeting.
I'll try to articulate better what my, my concern is. I'll send you an email. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that out. I made a note beside that myself. Because I'm noticing if you look at where August was, even for Stokes, and now it's up to sixty-seven. So there's been some, um.
I mean, there was a huge jump. Either the August was not recorded properly or September's been an awful month. Nip it in the bud is Barney Five Six.
Well, one of the issues, I know my student, my child attends there is, um, when people put information out on social media, the parents, they check their children out instead of, you know, following through or calling the school. So that probably is factoring me into, I don't know that, but I do know that a lot of the parents have been checking their students out due to, um, things that are, you know, the negative negativity with the, the things that have came along in the last several weeks.
Okay.
And so.
If they check them out before a certain time, they count as absent.
Exactly.
We'll move on to number two, school safety report, goal four, looking at A student discipline. Board, do you have any comments regarding the district or school individual student, the, uh, discipline report? Moving on to the dropout report. Well, the good thing is there's no dropouts. And that's a positive because usually there are some dropouts at the beginning of the school year. So that is a good thing about this report. Thank you all for your work with that. Moving on to our number four, school safety report, the number of accidents in the school, goal four. This is a very detailed report and, uh, it was, it's interesting seeing how it's written this time. Thank you all very much for this. Board, do you all have any questions? Moving on to number five, entrance superintendent updating reports, um, Mr. Dupree.
I do want to mention that on the eighteenth of this month, we will start our stu-, uh, student advisory committee. We'll meet at seven-thirty that morning. And at, uh, on the nineteenth, we will meet at eleven-thirty with our superintendent's roundtable. As of right now, we have thirty-eight students and we have, um, for the, uh, student advisory, which is a large number. And also for the, uh, superintendent's roundtable. And this is a very large number, just starting out, we have forty-nine, uh, community people that wants to be involved in what we're doing in the district. So we're moving right along. And it's gonna be a very good group. I think that's a good, a good sample of individuals that wanna be involved in our, in our school district.
Yes, thank you.
Item number one, Ms. Billy Smith, Cook Elementary School Target and Support Improvement, ATSI, Mrs. Billy Smith.
Hello.
Hello, how you doing?
I am delighted to provide an update for Joe Cook Elementary School for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We have new goals set for this school year as we have received our new assignment and we are striving to, uh, reach those goals. Please stop me at any time. Uh, on the first page, we have the goals that we have set for this upcoming school year. We are completing our benchmark assessment. We had a number of students who were absent last week due to various reasons. Um, a lot of them were ill, so we will complete the makeup assessments this week and next month. Um, if I'm here to present, I will have an update for the first benchmark which would let us know how we are progressing towards meeting the goals. Um, as always, I will have data conversations with the teachers to give each teacher in each classroom a specific goal. In return, I will expect the teachers to have data conversations with the students. And they're having data conversations with the parents so that everyone can take ownership and know exactly how the students are progressing. On the second page, it gives the update of our demographics. Since the end of September, we have gained a few more students. Um, that update will be presented next month, but we have enrollment, ADA, number of students with two or more absences. Again, the flu is starting to hit us heavily, whether with teachers and with students. But we're working really, really hard to make sure once they return, to, uh, continue to provide them with the instruction that they have missed. Safety will always be our number one priority. Number of discipline referrals are listed there. The bottom box, um, addressing the areas of, to address the challenge. We are an ATSI school that's assisted targeted school improvement based on the subgroup of our African-American subgroup. And that was over a three-year, uh, average, pre-COVID and so forth. The new designations, we received an email, I believe it was one day last week, we are expecting the new updated assignments within the next two or three weeks to let us know whether we're still, whether we still have this same designation or not. But as soon as we receive that, we'll let you all know. Working very, very closely with my MDE coach, Joe Cook has been assigned a MDE coach to specifically help us close the achievement gap for our students with, um, our special education students. Specifically, students with a learning disability of OHI, which stands for Other Health Impairment, our students with the speech, language, um, ruling, and our specific learning, students with a specific learning disability, specifically in grades K through three. So, uh, Dr. Brown works very, very closely with myself and the teachers and our district academic coach to provide intensive, uh, training. Uh, we dissect the standards and this is specifically in reading to help, uh, close the reading gap to make sure all students are proficient readers by the time they reach third grade. And she's also helping us to build the teacher capacity, a lot of coaching and modeling and understanding the science of teaching reading. Um, a huge part of that is the MTSS, MTSS process, the multi-tiered systems of support to make sure that we are providing an individual education plan for each student. Not only our students who have a specific, uh, who have been identified to have some type of learning disability, but each student, even if a child is performing at the proficient or advanced level, our goal is to make sure we keep them there, uh, and to challenge them and to make sure that everyone is receiving rigorous instruction. Um, she's usually in our building at least twice a month and we have built a very, very close relationship. She is part of our team at Joe Cook Elementary. Again, over on the right side to describe specific district supports, constant support with the academic coaches to help deliver instruction for targeted teachers and targeted students based on the data. We started at the beginning of the school year, our most recent data was our I-Ready and the state assessment that we received for our current fourth and fifth grade students. We have, uh, updated data from our ELS, we'll look at that and, and determine our next path, whether we stay on the same path or whether we choose to go a different way in order to push for growth for all the students. We will deliver direct instruction after we receive, after we get finished disaggregating the data. We have been working, we call it WOW. We write on Wednesdays. Every Wednesday we write, it's a prompt that is given to the teachers from the academic coach. And so it's in order for us to start at the beginning of the school year to build the stamina. So by the time we take our writing assessment, the students, it's, it's a breeze for them. It's something that they have done the entire year. We do this with all students pre-K through five. We don't just start in grade three to, to, to teach the process of writing. And it's amazing and the teachers are very proud and the students are very proud, especially the little ones, of their response to the writing prompt each week. We are continuing to have our monthly parent literacy meeting, have an outstanding parent liaison. We have at least two meetings a month on various topics. And we present, she presents information to the parents so that they can help their students at home to become proficient readers. We present those, we have those meetings at various times in order to accommodate parents who are working or they may have other things going on. The last page provides an update, the last three years, Joe Cook has received school improvement funds and it gives an update of the remaining balances that's left. All the funds for FY twenty have been, uh, spent. There's only a very, very small amount that was left for FY twenty-one, a little leftover from, uh, some payroll benefits. And then we have the balance for FY twenty-two. All of the funds are used based on research-based strategies to help us, um, close the achievement gap and push the students towards proficiency. Is there any question?
Very good. Mrs. Young?
I do. Um, how many students have tested so far? You mentioned that there were some that you were doing remakes this week. How many of our students have tested so far?
The ones who were not absent. Um, when I, when she gave me the list today, I have approximately thirty-five students who have to do makeup for this coming week. Keeping in mind, some of those students have to take three tests. And when we test, we make sure we test them in the best testing environment. I don't like to give a student, I only like to give a student one test today so that they're not burnt out. Um, the fifth grade students have to take ELA, math, actually maybe four, ELA, math, science, and there's a separate writing portion.
Okay, um, you mentioned the I-Ready data. How, um, are you able to see where you, what, what the benchmarks look like right now? I know you said next month you have that ready, but based on what you're looking at, are there, is there anything that would be alarming to you or how do you feel about what you're seeing?
Okay. My benchmark data, we're, the district is using, we refer to it as ELS. It's a little, it's different than I-Ready. It's Educational Leadership Solutions. All of our standards that we teach, they are end-of-the-year benchmark assessments. Um, just glancing at it, cause the, the reports were published over the weekend. We looked at some today in between parent meetings. You're gonna always have a few students as you're looking at, they're not progressing as you expect them to progress. But we have three remaining grading periods to where when we provide our direct targeted instruction, some of those students will be assigned to small group, intervention groups so that we can strive to, to, to close the achieving, uh, close the achievement gap. But, um, there are some pockets to where we're gonna have to approach it a little bit differently. On the plus side, we have some students thus far, after only nine weeks of instruction, they have shown, they have shown tremendous growth, uh, already. So it's a little bit of both.
Dr. Schumay?
Thank you. And congratulations again on the jump. Um, I, you, you mentioned that, um, there are twice a month meetings with parents to provide, ideas on, on improving reading for their students. How is the attendance on that?
Attendance is not where I would like it to be. For the parents coming out, those, um, we've adjusted the times, she adjusted the time of the last meeting. She sent out a survey, um, trying to get input from the parents as to which time would be best for them. Originally, we were having the meetings start at five o'clock. Some of the parents expressed that five o'clock was a little bit too early, some were getting off work, some were trying to get students off of the bus. So we bumped that time back a little bit later and we'll see this upcoming month whether or not the attendance improves. Uh, on the other side, Dr. Schumay, we, we work really, really hard to make sure that we have constant communication with our parents, not only the communication coming from our parent liaison, but the classroom teachers, whether it's through telephone calls, letters, remind and so forth. But all, all of my teachers, not only my parent liaison, they're in constant communication with the parents to let them know how their students are progressing. And if the students are slipping a little bit, I, you know, we strive to let the parents know right then so we can try our best to nip it and, and, and continue, uh, in a positive, to positive direction. So all that being said, I think some of them, they may not come because the classroom teacher's in constant communication with them and they have the tools and resources that they need. But we're still gonna continue to, uh, to have the meetings. It was a huge eye-opener for some of my parents last year, especially as we got closer to testing, for them to actually see what a sample test looks like. A lot of the parents did not realize that this, this is a rigorous test and we need their support in order for us to help their children. We, we must be on one page.
Thank you.
Ms. Sparks?
Um, I have one question. With the parent meeting, um, the literacy parent meeting, is virtual an option?
She's a techy, yes, sir. She loves technology.
So, um, having that, has that been implemented or made known to the parents? So that if they can't make the meeting, they could tune in virtually?
She has not had, she has not done it, uh, presented live, but that's something that, that we can take back and, and we can definitely make, make plans for that. And I would ask her for other, she's, um, she's, she's one who loves technology and she's probably gonna take it and make it even, make it wonderful. I'll, I'll ask her about it.
All right, thank you.
Any other, uh, questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good evening, Mrs. Dismute.
Good evening. I am President of Dismutes, President of Sale Elementary. Uh, what we have before you, as, uh, my cohort just discussed, and the, is the, uh, overall school goal. Sale was an F last year and, uh, scored two hundred and ninety-nine points to be a D from the, uh, twenty-twenty-one school year. So with twenty-two, twenty-three, we set the goals, using a fifteen percent, uh, increase. And we, with those variables, we looked at all the students, we discussed it with the teachers and we made sure that everybody was, uh, in agreement what our goal should be. So you, what you see before you is what we will have as far as our participation and anticipation as far as, uh, accomplishing that goal. Now, it's twenty-eight points away from accomplishing a C and seventy-eight points from a B, but right here, what you have is, uh, looking at a B, but, uh, we'll be happy with a C. But this is what we have. On the next page, you will see our, uh, update as far as enrollment, two hundred and seventy-seven students, whereas last year, I think it was two hundred and sixty-one, so our enrollment has increased, and steadily increasing. Uh, our student ADA is ninety-two percent and percentage of students with two or more absences is thirty-five percent. Teacher attendance rate is ninety-six percent and number of discipline referrals is twelve. However, that is, does include, uh, US. Teacher attendance rate is ninety-six percent and number of discipline referrals is twelve. However, that is, does include, uh, USA. Describe how the school is addressing areas of challenge presented by data above and areas that cause the school's identification. We have instructional coaching, which is provided to build the teacher's capacity to provide high-quality instructional interventions through the multi-tiered, uh, support system. We also have external providers that are working with our targeted areas to promote proficiency. And we also have a monthly PBIS. Kind of wanna talk about that little part in, in reference to, uh, the MTSS. Uh, we address the students' deficits. Uh, we have monthly meetings, I mean, excuse me, weekly meetings with, uh, grade-level teachers to discuss individual student's performance and intensive interventions. And each week, the teachers have to discuss what those interventions are, if they work or do not work, and do you need to go back to the drawing board to see what you need to do to meet the individual student's needs. Also to communicate to the parents what those needs are, because there's opportunities for the parents to work with those students at home. We had t- parents who called in to ask, what can I do with my child? We had meetings with our MTSS meeting, but the parents will come in and we discuss with the parents what you can do with your child. Here are some interventions you can do to take home, and, uh, that has been an eye-opener for our parents. Curriculum, as far as describing specific, uh, specific, uh, district supports that have been provided to assist the school principal or SLT to address the school improvement efforts. Curriculum coaches provide coaching to classroom teachers, direct instruction to target ELA, math and science. The WOW, as, uh, Billy mentioned, weekly writing prompts. And with those weekly writing prompts, the coaches send those out to us that make sure that they are, have been, uh, researched. We just don't wanna give any type of writing prompt and it's age-appropriate. However, once the teacher, uh, give those, they have it in the math classes as well, but it's the ELA teacher who grades those prompts and wanna give feedback right away. Data analysis, we look at all the, uh, benchmarks, uh, and I-ready to make sure we look at specific items that the kids are excelling in, as well as the students that's not excelling. We want to do, we look at this, uh, saying around the school is, we want to pull the lows and wanna push the highs. Describe specific P-16 activities that have taken place to support school district improvement efforts. A literacy, uh, parent liaison will conduct monthly parent meetings to build a relationship and educate the parents on how they can provide ongoing support at home. The meetings will be held at various times to accommodate the parents' schedules. Also, we discuss at the beginning of the school year with the teachers and the parents. Uh, we have what is called our lowest-performing students. We wanna make sure that that is, uh, on with the lowest-performing students. When we looked at scores from last year, there were ten students in fourth grade, eleven students in fifth grade. We know those students by name. The cafeteria staff know those students, the janitorial staff know those students, the counselors know those students, because you don't want to, when we see them, we're not saying that's LPS students. We wanna make sure that we are asking them about their scores and what we can do to support them with their scores. Students also have a data binder where we have a data tracker, tractors. We don't want to say that, uh, only our students are served, receiving service are the students have IEP. Every student in that building should have a IEP. Where we sit down with them, we discuss what their scores were last year, what their scores are going to be for the upcoming year and what they need to do to, uh, progress so they can take ownership of their scores. And that is it for sales.
Let me ask you a question real quick. I have to do it quickly. Uh, the, uh, individual reading programs, when you're using the MTSS, uh, process, and you said that our student has an IEP, but our student should have a IRP, right? An individual reading program where you're tracking where they are and what points you want to bring them up so that they fully understand as they move up the ladder.
Yes, ma'am.
Or not.
Yes, ma'am.
So they do have individual reading programs?
Yes, ma'am. I was using IEP as an analogy.
Got it.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Individual polls on every child in the building, yes, ma'am.
That's what I was thinking. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying it. Dr. Shumay?
Since both you and, uh, Ms. Smith mentioned the WOW and the reading prompts.
Yes, ma'am.
Could, uh, could you give me an example of what kind of, of, of a prompt that they, a, a child would get?
Well, of course, in, uh, like kindergarten, it's not really an actual prompt because they're gonna be using colors and kind of more graphic. Uh, and as you go up the ladder, the prompt gets a little bit more age-appropriate, uh, for those kids. So it's just a scenario. And I know Ms. Terrell, uh, is here, Smith, if she's here, uh, I'll put you on the line. Do you mind if I do that? She's the, she's my, she's my coach who gives it, gives to us. We give these students, so can you give an example, one?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, what it is, it's a grade level appointment to late class and they have to read the text and they have to write, it's called writing on the band. Many of the state citizens, the rap, the math writing system. So they'll have, uh, first, we'll determine the building, how much time they're given or on the state assessment, they have to find what kind of building they're in. Like, uh, people say, based on their late class or the grade level. If they give a prompt to read, then they have to, they run the, he just read the story about, uh, Allison, um, like. Continue the story from Allison's face, that would be there. So they have to read the writing code, there and they talk to them, and, um, they'll be writing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was a former English teacher, so I was just curious.
I have one question, Ms. Dismu.
Yes, ma'am.
Where are we on your, um, your benchmark testing in the building?
We have about, uh, twenty-four students, uh, and they have the flu. And as a matter of fact, some won't be back for another three, four more days and they still be tested. But right now, uh, we are, Ms. Hanson has already, we've published the, uh, benchmarks so that teachers, we won't let those students stop us. We can look at data right now. So it's been published for us to look at. As a matter of fact, the principal's got on today discussing some of those, uh, areas that, uh, we looked at. Some were awesome. Some kids remain to five. Then we have our, like I said, our LPS students that we gotta work with.
All right. Thank you very much. Very good reports, ladies. Thank you all. So informative. Mrs. Williams, CMS. How you doing, Mrs. Williams?
I'm well, thank you. Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
Um, I will be reporting to you on Columbus Middle School. So right now, just a candid conversation between our board members and this building level principal. We have not set our goal yet. And the reason we have not set our goal yet is because we're under a lot of construction at the middle school. As you all know, we were seven points away from a D. So before we start just throwing out numbers, we get to, um, go back to the drawing board a little bit and, um, see where we are and see where we're heading. So before we throw out random numbers, I need to make sure that my teaching capacity is there, that my teachers understand the assignment, as well as to make sure if they understand the assignment, we can give the assignment to our students. I've been working very, very, very closely with, with Ms. Wilson. Um, she has incorporated a lot of new things, uh, for Columbus Middle School that was much needed. Um, and I'll get to that on that second page. So it's the fact that we have not set a goal, when we set our goal, which I anticipate our goal being set in December. When we set our goal, we wanna set a fair goal, but we wanna make sure that, that the teacher capacity is there where we need it. And so we do have a lot of external coaches in our building right now and they are really giving us the support. They're giving me the support to be able to make an intelligent opinion or, um, an intelligent hypothesis on which way we're going with our goal. So we have not yet set our goals. We are talking about it now. Talk about some different things that we are doing in the building as I get to the second page. But the lack thereof, we're taking our time to make sure we get it right this year. We were seven points away. That broke my heart, but we're still pressing towards the mark. Uh, the, the papers, the, um, scores that you see here, they were our scores from last year. I have taken the time to see where we were pre-COVID, um, just to see where our growth gains were, where we lost our points. Um, just in the area of science alone, pre-COVID, we were at forty-six percent. So I was like, well, what was the difference between COVID, uh, science scores and the science scores that we have now? But those teachers were able to bank those scores under the old assessment. So this was the first time they had comparable data. Uh, and as you all remember, last year, I did talk to you about having an eighth-grade teacher that was out. Um, seventeen weeks of school year. That hurt us. It was a lot of factors that go in, uh, to what played a part in our, um, not getting those other seven points and we're really taking it seriously this time. So our second page for our enrollment, um, you can follow along. Our enrollment is there. Our ADA is, uh, ninety-three percent. However, on the, um, two, that two or more absences, that should be fifteen percent instead of the eighty-five percent. Our teacher rate of attendance is ninety-three percent and our, uh, discipline referrals for the month of September is twenty-six. So when I took on the middle school back in two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, the month of September was ninety-six. So we have been along the way building capacity for discipline, safe schools. We have been doing a lot of great things. So now we have the school conducive, the environment conducive to learning. Our students are calm. Our students are very, very, um, energetic. So like the transition of changing the classes, uh, Mr. Dupree came over and we talked about making some changes, uh, just in changing of the classes. So we have, now we have our sixth graders moving at one time, our seventh graders moving at one time and our eighth graders moving at one time, just to ensure that extra measure of safety, uh, just for our students transitioning in the hallway. Also, we've also discussed, uh, shortening my day but long, lengthening my day at the same time. Meaning we are looking at going, uh, next semester, we're looking at going to six-period days instead of seven-period days, which is gonna add about eight to ten more instructional minutes to each classroom. My concern about adding instructional minutes to the classroom is again the same concern. Making sure that we have the teacher capacity, we know what to do with those gained eight minutes. Not just we're adding eight minutes to say, hey, we, we're doing something over here at CMS. No, we need to be strategic and we need to be sound with our planning. So, uh, we are looking at other models in the state that has the same number of students, the same number of exploratory teachers that I have to ensure when we make this move, uh, we're making a move again that's conducive to the learning environment at CMS. So also, um, it says, describe how the school is assessing the areas of challenge presented by the data. Uh, we host weekly PLC meetings this year. And I mean, when I say weekly, every Thursday, if you come inside of our building, you will see that the common planning period is happening and our teachers are present and we are looking to either go over data or what we need to teach next and, and making sure that, um, all of my staff understand the, the target or, uh, where we are with the lesson planning. So we have implemented school-wide this year, excuse me, we have implemented school-wide PLCs on Thursday. Um, we have consultants coming in, external providers. Um, and so with those external, external providers, the number one thing that I'm hearing from each one of my providers is that it's the pacing, it's the planning, it's the preparedness. Okay, well, if it's the pacing, the planning and the preparedness, if you come into, go into any classroom now, you will see a focus wall on the board and that focus wall tells you how many minutes you are to be in this area, how many minutes you are to be in this area. So we are planning out those forty-five minutes together. So there is no reason for our pacing to be off. If you also look at our focus board, you will see that the planning and the preparedness had to happen. If not happenstance, what we got up to teach this morning, the preparedness and the planning has happened because you can see it on our board. This takes the guesswork from a sub, if we had a sub the next day. This takes the guessworks from our students who enter the classroom each day. You know there's a focus wall, you know where you should do. The focus wall all the way goes, all the way down to what to do when I am through. That's going to eliminate that time off task. It's going to give students an opportunity to go into the next phase of whatever it is, the next assignment. That's going to eliminate you messing with your buddy or you trying to be on your phone. You have something to do. Your whole forty-five minutes day has been thoroughly planned out. Also, we have implemented this year data walls in our classroom. And that simply means, so you all know that the performance levels, you have a one A, you have a one B, you have a two A, two B, get all the way up to a five, right? We know this. We have color-coded our students. Our students know their colors for, as far as their performance level. We have taken the time to cut out, um, raw scores. Raw score on your score report is how many questions you need to get to the next level. So the stu- the students have beside each, uh, performance level, they have the raw score level. The raw score level will tell you, hey, I only need nine points. If you were a one A student, hey, I only need nine points. Of course, we're not limiting them by any stretch of the imagination because we also talk to them about weighted growth. Weighted growth is when you can actually jump over a performance level. So we talk to them about weighted growth and we talk to them about their growth target. So we're doing a lot of things differently at CMS this year, which means there's a lot of training and planning that our teachers must have. Um, again, Ms. Wilson and I are working closely together. One, one of the first things she said, Gardner, you got to get you some more Promethean boards. So hey, guess what? I now have thirty more Promethean boards added to the whole building, um, just in this timeframe. Also, she talked to me about, we got to get our teachers where they understand and get the capacity. So we have, um, those external, external providers come, they leave great notes, teacher-specific notes. This classroom needs more of this. I'm noticing in this classroom. As you all can recall, last year, you asked me how much time was I spending on discipline and how much time I was actually in the classroom. And I told you it was about fifty-fifty. But with these external providers, they can be in the classroom more, come back and meet with me and then I can have those follow-up conversations to be able to carry that through with my teachers. So I'm very appreciative of the external providers. Also, um, I've modified some teacher's schedules. Um, I've, so I had one teacher who was a new teacher and to better support her, I paired her with a teacher that had a little bit more experience. And they're in the same classroom. They are teaching different sets of students, but to better support her in her classroom efforts, because this is a tested grade, she now has a co-teacher in that classroom to ensure, because teachers, they have an alternate route or they can graduate. But when, sometimes when they go their alternate route, their alternate route does not support them to, for day one of classroom instruction. So being able to know your staff and know who you need to pair with who and who needs that targeted support as a teacher, then you're only setting them up for success. If you're setting your teachers up for success, you're setting your students up for success. So we have looked at our personnel list, made necessary adjustments and changes to make sure that our teachers are comfortable teaching our students. Also, we do have our, we still have the great help of our, um, coaches, our district coaches. Um, we do have two new additions to our staff. That's Ms. April Harris and Ms. Sharita O'Neal. Both of those ladies are very, very passionate in their content area. It's a joy to work with them. They give me weekly reports. They, um, go over beyond to work with the, um, teachers to make sure that if they have any deficit areas and they are not, they don't want to come directly to me, they do not feel like they are talent on them. They're very much wanting to support them in that area. So I do appreciate my district coaches as well. As far as our benchmark data, we are, our benchmark data in the way of ELS, we're almost finished with that. I did have a few, um, students who were out. We are looking at those assessments to make sure that they are aligned with our pacing guide to make sure that that data is valid. Also, um, and then things, um, that the P-16 activities, we again, like the other schools have already reported, we are having our monthly parent meetings as well, um, to ensure that we do have parent participation to come out to the building. Um, we are not quite where we would like to be with our parent participation yet either. However, um, I did take that suggestion, Mr. Sparks, thank you about having those meetings virtual. So we will try that at CMS as well. Um, we do have those alternate times. Uh, have a great, uh, PTO supportive group. Uh, we are, they are generating a lot of, of support. So we do appreciate our, um, our PTO as well. And my last page. It's our balance in each year. We did receive money. We have spent our money for our twenty. We have exhausted all those funds for twenty. We have exhausted all the funds for twenty-one and we have a, um, about half the money left for the fiscal year of twenty-twenty-two. And I have some great ideas on how to, um, exhaust those funds as well.
That's great.
Any questions for me?
Very good, board. Do you have any questions? Mrs. Young, Mr. Sparks?
I was gonna ask about the Per- Promethean boards.
Promethean boards, yes, sir.
Okay, so you said you have thirty new Promethean boards?
Yes.
Okay, so we, did you have any that could have been repaired or refurbished or did we just decide to go all new?
Very good question, Mr. Sparks. Um, they were so old. It was. Started the wrong way. Didn't I, Holly? I heard you.
Smart board.
Well, they smart board. They were so outdated.
Okay.
I should say, they were so outdated that, um, the manpower that it was gonna constantly take to, um, continue to fix them, fix them, fix them. Um, it was suggested that it would be better to.
Purchase.
Purchase new.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I had a quick question, uh, Ms. Williams. Were you done? I'm sorry. You sure? Go ahead. Okay. Um, how many students, um, have we tested at the middle school so far for the benchmark?
Benchmark, you're speaking of the ELS, correct? So we have tested all of them that was present. So it's gonna be different, varies for the different, um, grade levels. So I have about thirty-five kids that still need to test in some areas for sixth grade, about forty students who need to test in seventh grade and probably eighth grade is my largest group of probably about approximately forty students for different subject areas.
Okay. So you've had an opportunity to see that data at this point or some of it?
So the data has been published and we are having a, um, we're having to look at the data to make sure that our data aligns with our pacing guide, um, in some areas um, to ensure what has been taught is exactly what. um, to ensure what has been taught is exactly what, um, was assessed. So we are having to go one more step further to ensure that, um, cause we don't want to penalize a student for an item that may be on the test that wasn't taught. So we, at this point, we're just aggregating the data.
So is that, would that be your concerning area where you are right now? Or are there any concerning areas? You're saying that basically the information doesn't match what they're being taught in the classroom, is that what you're saying? And what's being tested?
So in the area of ELA, there were a few items that were added to the assessment that did not necessarily, was not necessarily on my pacing guide. We were told that the test was a cumulative assessment. In the area of math, the test I've been told was pretty accurate to what had been taught. In the area of science, um, some things were assessed that were not on our pacing guide, um, our first pacing guide. And so we're having to go through and, um, pull those items from the assessment.
Okay, alright, thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you for bringing it out because they grabbed my attention as well, because I'm wondering about that. Thank you for answering the question. Board members, you have any other, uh, comment, questions? Thank you very much, Mrs. Williams. Keep up the good work. Next we have, uh, Mrs. Debbie Murray, how you doing?
I'm good, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, you have this data, um, we kind of, we, we looked at it at one point in time, we've tweaked it a little bit, when more data came out from the, um, state, you know, they have to go back and, and verify it. And then this is the final piece of data that helps us sit where we're sitting right now. So I'm just gonna kind of go over it real quick, if there's a place that you wanna stop and ask me questions about, I will. Um, but as you can see right here, um, I like seeing the different colors now, we're not just red across. So, um, it's really good to see, um, the, the colors that are coming out, the Cs and it, and that one blue, and we just hope the rest of them follow Cook Elementary. Um, this is just our, I'm sorry, our total, um, points, you can see where we came up on our points and that's, that's what made us grow to our C, that's, that's a really nice look to see. Um, and we're coming off that chart, so that chart's gonna have to change a little bit when we go up the next time. Our reading proficiency did not quite get back up to the level we had had it, but it did jump a lot from, um, the twenty-twenty-one scores. Along with our math proficiency, if you'll see how much it, it went. Um, our history really made a jump. Our science is growing and, um, if you listen to what Ms. Gardner said, most of our scores in the past had been banked scores, we could use those. And then we went into COVID and now, then we had, all we had was the twenty-twenty-one data. So we're growing back up and getting that back up and that's encouraging to see. And this is for our students who, um, just grew, it's a, um, good jump from nineteen. These are, um, our lowest performing subgroup that all the principals talked to you about. And this has to do with, um, our readiness at the high school and then our acceleration. Now, I will say that our acceleration has dropped off a little bit, um, we're still high with it, but what happened, they changed what the, um, GPA was that a student had to have before they could take a dual credit course. So that helped, kept some of our kids not being able to take those, um, those dual credit cores, courses. And then our graduation rate, um, that's the highest it's been in a very long time.
Much improvement to me, thank you very much. And I do appreciate all of your work and I'd like to acknowledge that we really will miss you, but I wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you, and I will still be cheering CMSD from, from my house. But I do appreciate, um, all the years that I've been able to be in this district and I, I'm, I will cherish those moments.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Uh-huh, thank you very much. Move on, item C, technology update, Mr. J.C. Lawson.
Good evening, board, how you doing?
Good evening.
Um, I'm gonna go as fast as I can, I have a lot of slides here. And the first half, I'm gonna try to blow through it so I can address some questions that I know you guys have directly for me. So on this first slide, there we go. On this first slide, uh, this is district website, I know that, uh, this is a priority for each of you, um, as a board. Um, as you know, we went to a new website, uh, not too long ago, uh, these are just some things that I've made recently. So the strategic, uh, plan that you asked me to put up there, um, job descriptions were put up there on the front page instead of the calendar and such. Uh, so if you ever have any concerns about the website, please email those to Mr. Dupree. I usually get to website requests twenty-four to forty-eight hours after I've been emailed them. Um, from that, uh, all the schools are, uh, they own their own websites. I myself don't know what's going on day-to-day for the schools, so it's best that they, um, are able to manage their websites. They've been trained and told what to kind of keep up to date. Um, with that being said, this is just, uh, daily average use of our website over the past month. You can see it goes up and down, up and down. That, that is showing we have, uh, about a thousand users Monday through Friday. So every day we have about a thousand users, on Saturday and Sunday it's like two hundred. Now, these are the most popular webpages we have on our website, um, over the past month. Now, I wanna point out here the top five websites or so, uh, or webpages, uh, this to me shows what our user is, who is going to our website. Uh, that slash right there that you see forty-two thousand page views, uh, that means homepage, okay? You can get to our homepage two different ways, clumseyeschools.org or clumseyeschools.org/home. Um, you'll actually see that twice on the top ten pages. So, uh, I make the district website the homepage for every computer in the district, uh, that's why that number is inflated, to be honest. Uh, from there though, you can see the employees and students are, uh, our most common users. Um, to me that says that, uh, we're not getting so much community engagement, um, we probably need to try to increase that, um, but I believe we're getting most of our community engagement through our we-, our, um, our social media and our Falcon Blast and such like that. And these are a couple of projects that I have going on. Was it, it, it was Ms. Cox, you mentioned NFA, correct? Um, so, uh, multi-factor authentication, we've already got that in place, we got that on lockdown. Um, so we have two-factor authentication for all employees of our district. Uh, it is optional for all students of our district. Uh, the reason being, a kindergarten probably doesn't have a phone, right? Uh, so, uh, if you guys try to access your email accounts, you have two-factor authentication. Uh, about a year ago, I turned two-factor on for all administrators and then over the summer, I turned it on for all employees. Uh, so, starting August, right before school started, I believe is when that went live. So I've, I focused very, very, very heavily on cybersecurity, um, something I'm very interested in, that's why I got my masters in, uh, but it's also something that if we get attacked, like a very bad attack, we'll lose money, we'll lose instructional time, we'll be shut down. Um, it's vital that we are in a good defensive position cybersecurity-wise. And I believe that we're in the best we've been so far. It always gets better, I'm always continually improving, um, but whether that's email security or two-factor authentication and stuff like that, I'm always addressing this. Um, a couple of other projects we have going on, uh, network upgrade, I've talked about this at length, that, that stuff's been ordered, uh, it's on back order because of chip shortages and supply, supply chain, um, issues, uh, so those will get here as they come in. Uh, internal fiber, that's an E-rate project that I'm working on that will increase our stability in our network and the Cook auditorium, I'm very, very, very excited about this. I know that we, Cook is a beautiful auditorium, but the AV, not very beautiful, right? So, uh, I, we have ESER money, uh, thankful for the federal programs and the business office for giving us that, um, and I'm working on getting that, uh, rolling right now. These are, um, some statistics, um, and this is just showing, if you notice in August, this is email incidents. Uh, if you notice in August, that number goes drastically down, that's when I put two-factor authentication on, that's all I want you to take from that slide. This is just how many emails that we're blocking on a day-to-day basis. Uh, I believe this is over the past month or so, um, hundreds of thousands of things being blocked, uh, that are coming in, uh, bad into our network, uh, email-wise. Now, this is our network, uh, this is just the total number of, uh, requests that we're sending out, um, so, uh, just lots of data being passed and a total number of blocks. So we send about a hundred and thirty-one network requests on our computers and our network and we're blocking about twenty million of those. Um, now those blocks can be anything from inappropriate content to, uh, gaming content to, uh, malware phishing and stuff like that. Um, those are just types of things that, um, I am blocking to make sure that we are one, secure, two, civic compliant, and three, focusing on educational, um, websites and such. Now, um, this is where I'm gonna address some of your specific questions for me. Uh, so current roadblocks, now the district sends a large number of laptops to be repaired. Now, there's a lot of numbers up there, um, what I want you to focus on are the last two numbers on that slide, you'll see seventy-five point two percent and eighty-two point nine percent. So seventy-five percent is total number of tickets being sent by our school district. We are sending more total laptop tickets, these are strictly laptops that I'm talking about. We're sending more laptop tickets than seventy-five percent of Mississippi school districts. Now eighty-two point nine percent, that number right there is how many unique tickets. So, um, individual laptops being sent, not repeat offenders, okay? So seventy-five includes, uh, the same laptop over and over again, eighty-two is just unique computers. Now, the reason being that number being higher is because when a student has a broken laptop, our job as, as the IT department, get that, get that device, send it off to be, uh, warranty repaired and give them another device in the meantime. Now that, we, a lot of the stuff that we do, I would say, all of the stuff I would do, in fact, uh, student-wise, is internet-based. So having a specific laptop that is my laptop, not necessarily the concern, when all of the stuff is saved up, saved on the cloud side, um, they're not saving files directly to their computer, so having a different computer is not an issue. But what that does is that increases our breakage rate per device. Um, if you take anything away from this, if you take anything away from this, we are sending more computers than seventy-five to eighty-two percent of Mississippi school Um, I, I explained that a little bit more in hard evidence, circumstantial evidence, uh, our lap-, our senior laptops last year, uh, the warranties, uh, for those MacBooks increased because the warranty company was losing money on us. We were sending so many laptops, they were losing money and they had to increase our warranty, um, renewal. That had not been done, uh, under Beff's administration, that was new and that, that, I was shocked when that happened, um, but that was just how, how many laptops were we sending day-to-day. Um, I'm gonna talk about the summer asset, so these numbers up here, uh, that is numbers that I received in June and May and June of twenty-twenty-two, not numbers since school started, okay? These are just the number of laptops that have broken, missing cases, missing chargers and, and broken, or missing devices. Um, no, those numbers are pretty high. Now, when a device, uh, leaves mine, uh, leaves my department, it is the property of the school. The school is then in charge, it's on their asset list, they're financially responsible for, for those devices. Um, those, uh, devices, uh, you know, they know which student has it, which, uh, which teacher has it and so on and so forth. Um, what I wanna point out here is since, uh, once we got those numbers, we sent every single student laptop that was given to us to be repaired over the summer. Every, every student laptop ticket that we had was closed, starting, um, starting, school started and we started finding laptops just sitting there that had been broken that hadn't been reported to us. Or new administrators came in and they found laptops that were broken and hadn't been sent in to us as tickets. That put us on a bad foot to start the year, kinda started us, us behind the gate, uh, or, or you know, behind the pack out of the gate. Um, with that, so I have a rough formula here, uh, the, the formula that I have is how many laptops have been requested. So I've had very frank conversations with our principals saying, hey, if you're short laptops, tell me how many you need, I will get those laptops to you as fast as I, as I can as a, as a department. So what I did is I took the number of laptops requested divided by the number of students enrolled at that school. So for example, at the middle school, they've requested two hundred laptops, that's how many supposedly they're short. Now, whether that means they're broken or missing or, or whatever, it could, it's a number of things and it depends on school to school why they're short. Um, but they've requested thirty percent of their student population in laptops. That, uh, the middle school, or the elementary average across, across the district is sixteen point four percent. Um, we're, we, again, we're sending a ton of laptops to be repaired, um, and that is making us, you know, have, at, starting late off the gate, right? And because we found devices that were broken that weren't reported to us, um, you know, we're just, we're behind. Uh, C-H-S laptops, I'm gonna address that a little bit more going forward in a, in a slide after this. Um, replacement chargers, we debi-, excuse me, just over twelve thousand dollars worth of replacement chargers, I didn't have the money out of my budget alone to, to afford that, so we worked with the schools to get that. As soon as I had the chargers, they had them in their hands. So how are we addressing this? Now, we have some IT positions open already, uh, and we are trying to get some applicants, those, that position's been open for roughly three, maybe four weeks, I haven't had a single applicant. Um, I myself have reached out to EMCC, I've called MSU and I've called, uh, the W and I've reached out to all professional organizations that I'm in. Um, I, I have done all the professional contacts that I have, uh, really, I, and I've have, had conversations with each, um, you know, higher education in the area and they all said they had, they had potential people that might be interested, we have not had one, um, apply yet. Uh, I still have a couple of places like Mississippi Coding Academy and such that I'm gonna try to reach out to, um, but I'm working diligently to get these positions filled and get, get up to speed. This is just kinda how, how are the laptops done? So this EDLA project that was done by the Mississippi Department of Education, um, when we, uh, did this, I tried to order for all elementary schools roughly thirty laptops more than they had in student population, for the middle school sixty more. Um, the high school laptops are done out of a separate project. With that, uh, the general idea is that all, uh, all elementary and middle schools, they should have ten more laptops than, roughly, ten more laptops than they have students. So if I, at school A, have two hundred kids, I should have two hundred and ten laptops. Um, it is up to the schools to tell me that, uh, and that's two hundred and ten working laptops and that's up to the schools to tell me. Those extra ten are so that, you know, Johnny comes with a broken laptop, hey, that's great, thank you, here's a working one. It's supposed to get him going. That's a breakdown of how many laptops are at each location. Uh, what I, what I have is every school has an earmarked pile of laptops and then in the, in that specific cool, school, it is then broken down by employee or by sta-, or by student. The reason being, one school might need certain software, uh, and the employees have higher privileges than the students do. So we are, uh, currently, like I said, uh, we are sending so many laptops, if I have a laptop that's working on, on hand, I'm sending that out to the school as soon as it's imaged. Uh, imaged means, uh, putting our profile on it, our, our security privileges and such. Uh, the warranty company in Jackson has roughly a hundred and thirty of our laptops right Uh, this is specifically about the high school, so the high school gets roughly two hundred sixty to two hundred, two hundred and eighty laptops every year. Um, as you know, those, uh, high school, the class of twenty-twenty-six laptops were just delivered last Thursday. Bad news, they were delivered not meeting my speci-, specifications. I've required, I've required that they be tagged, come imaged and, uh, come as a certain OS level, none of those three things happened. So I'm working with the vendor to get that, uh, rectified. Um, I've had multiple, uh, meetings just today to try to get that, uh, try to get that fixed. So, not including the freshman laptops, if you had two eighty plus two sixty plus two seventy-five, they, uh, from my numbers, they should have eight hundred and sixteen laptops at the high school on their books, uh, and they have roughly nine hundred and five- And they have roughly 905 students enrolled at that school. So we definitely are short. I have contacted the high school administration multiple times at this point, requesting, hey, how many laptops do you need? Give me a number, I will try to supplement you in the meantime. Unfortunately, I have not gotten that number. In my mind, it is poor asset management just to send an unknown number of laptops to a place, because that's how you start losing devices. So as soon as they give me that number, I will work diligently to get to fill that gap. But like I said, those devices have come in, working really, really hard to get those to meet the specifications that they need to meet. And hopefully, they'll have those in their hands soon. This is just ticketing. That's a broken laptop, you can see right there, it has a broken screen. I would say broken screens, broken keyboards are our most common type of ticket that come in. Hundreds of those are coming in. I did kind of what I thought was a fun presentation. I think it shocked the rest of the directors in the room when I did it. I brought one of those laptops to a meeting this morning. I dropped it from chest height. I punched the screen, and I stood my entire weight on it. It didn't break. These devices are very tough. So if these devices are breaking like that, I think it's gross negligence, or it's almost intentional. I just don't know how else to put it. These are education-grade laptops. They're made to be beaten up, but not broken. So the fact that we're having so many damaged laptops is kind of concerning to me. Next slide. This is just how many tickets we have. So over the summer, I said we closed all tickets that were given to us on student laptops, and we closed other tickets. These are hard tickets. I define hard ticket being that tickets submitted through our portal, which you saw earlier, that's cmsd group league.com. Tickets submitted through our portal are hard tickets. Soft tickets are phone calls, emails, stopping JC or one of my employees in the hall and saying, hey, what about this? I need this. Those are soft tickets, those don't get recorded. Just hard tickets is all that I have numbers on. So we started, we started the fiscal year, July 1, 2022, with roughly 80 tickets. Most of those were Promethean boards, and I'm going to get that, get to that in a minute. Most of those are Promethean boards. So since July 1, we've had 492 hard tickets opened. We have closed 320 of those. That leaves us at about 251 open tickets. Again, most of those are Promethean boards. Middle school just cleared out a ton of those tickets. So I'm working to go through them, double-check that we closed those old Promethean boards that got replaced. The time it takes to repair a device can vary. The warranty department comes once a week, on Wednesday mornings, they pick up and return devices. If everything goes right, we can get a device in a week. Most of the time, we get a device four to six weeks later. That's for a number of reasons, again, chip shortage, supply chain. Sometimes these devices get stuck in, if it's a replacement device, especially with these high school laptop ones that I just ordered, they get stuck in customs. Just various things that can occur. Promethean board tickets. So our Promethean boards are just point-blank getting older. They're starting to go out of date. The company itself is starting to discontinue replacement parts for these boards. So I have contacted all the principals, I sent them an email and said, hey, we need to, as a group, start trying to find funds to replace your boards. I know for a fact that middle school one made a huge order, and we have a couple other schools starting to address that problem in itself. I only have one employee that's certified to work on Promethean boards. I personally just don't have the budget to cover Promethean boards over the whole school district. So that's why I have to work with schools to try to figure out what they have and see what we can put together. All right, takeaway notes. This is what I want you to remember from my spiel of me talking like an auctioneer just now, okay? We send more laptops than 75 to 82% of all Mississippi school districts. Now, the next part of this, MDE, the law of the land right now that we've been, we have been told, is that we can't find for broken laptops. We're working with MDE to figure out, you know, to see that official documentation and how we can address that. And how we can hold students accountable that are breaking assets. The IT staff, my staff did not grow when I received 3,000 extra devices. When we bought this huge slew of devices, my staff stayed the same size. Currently, I have five technicians and then myself, so we're a six-person staff. We're trying to increase those numbers, increase the number of technicians, but we do not have any applicants at this time, and I checked last night around 8 o'clock. We've closed 320 tickets since July 1. So the tickets, my five technicians deal with the day-to-day tickets. Just like how y'all are a 30,000-foot view, I'm a 10,000-foot view, and then my staff is ground level. That's at least how it's supposed to be. With the number of tickets we have coming through, I'm kind of in the ground level with them a lot. I'm imaging, just finished imaging all of the time clocks, all of the principal computers, the new transportation computers. I'm doing some of this work as well, as well as trying to maintain the networking, the cybersecurity, and you name it. The ordering and stuff like that. The day-to-day tickets that I let my staff handle are Promethean boards, hardware laptop repairs, printing errors and such. And then lastly, what I'm very passionate about, cybersecurity, always trying to increase it. I've only had, and knock on wood, only had one student so far this year get around my blocks. Last year, had a huge problem with it. I worked with the antivirus vendor, I identified hex codes that were malicious, and that the antivirus software was not addressing. I worked with them hand-in-hand, fixed their, we fixed their applications, so that is blocking those hex codes now. Trying to improve this type of stuff, and I believe we're in a very, very, very good stance now. And with that, I'm done.
You done?
Done. Done. I can breathe now.
I just saw you step away.
He took a breath.
He's trying to go fast, I'm sorry.
Very thorough presentation.
Yes. I hear you talk about security and the importance of it. How often do you make security checks as far as, or is that something that you do?
Can you define a security check? What do you mean by that?
You know, to test the system, to make sure it hasn't been compromised.
So I have, how to put this? Onion, an onion-layer approach. We have multiple layers of cybersecurity measures. Point being, if I have a hole right here and a hard point right here, it's not going to go through. So if my holes are misaligned, which I don't have any holes, quote-unquote, right? I don't try to plan I have holes. But if I do, it goes through a system where it's going to be blocked in multiple layers. So the antivirus, that is, you guys all have antiviruses on your home laptops, right? That is something that I receive reports about every day. The picture I showed you, the type of blocks that I'm seeing, I check that maybe every week or so. The antivirus is what I focus on heavily, because that really sees all of it. And so I'm receiving emails about those daily, and then I check them from there. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I have another question. I hear you talk about the laptops and how they're missing or what have you, and then they show up, whatever. Do you have any way or means to do inventory checks or randomly?
So I have, I have the tracking software, which we've talked about before. It's called Prey Project, very, very cool software. If a, when teachers, or mostly administrators, teachers, student loses a laptop, reports it to a teacher, or teacher loses a laptop, reports it to an administrator. That's the workflow there. When they report it to me, I then go and I see the last time it was logged in, the location it was logged in at, the time it was logged in at. And I can lock the device, I set a siren on it, and I have it ping me. So as soon as that device hits any internet connection, it sends me an email every two minutes. So I can do, I can do that. And we do have asset tracking software as well, especially for these EDLA projects, or the EDLA project one-to-one devices. That is done through a software called Tempest.
Okay. All right, so listening to the numbers that you presented tonight, and the problems that we have in our district, collectively speaking, would you consider yourself to be understaffed? Or is the staff that you have under trained? Or both? Both?
Both, simply both.
Thank you.
I only have one question, I think. So each year, we know at the middle school how many students roughly we'll have going in for the next year. So that we're not disenfranchising our students, that would it not be, you know, better, meet the needs of the students, would it not be better suggested if we would order those ahead so that we're not? I don't know, it just seems like it's just a major disconnect, and we're still in October, and we still don't have devices for our students, and we're in a one-to-one district. You know, how can we be this far down the road, and we're still kicking the can, and we still don't have devices, and students are still using their phones or what have you in class?
Yes, absolutely. That is a concern. The problem is, is the fiscal year is in July. So I don't have the, I don't have the budget alone in the 1120 fund, my fund, to order laptops for the freshmen. We have to use Title I funds for that. In fact, that's what we've used every year except for this year. This year, we used Esser funds, I believe. The problem is, is July 1 rolls over, and then that is when the new budget comes in. So the soonest I can order those laptops is July. And I can't get that, I usually don't get that PO process because the year doesn't roll over until maybe mid-July. Yes, I would love to order them sooner. And I talked to Mr. Chapman about this pretty frankly, when he was new into the role, I think, or around that July time, right? And just said, it's a really bad timing. And I'm open to suggestions about when we can maybe order those sooner. I just don't know budget-wise what there is to do. Like I said, the chip shortage and the supply chain issues that we've had. And when I order these laptops, remember, they're not coming from the United States, right? It's really causing big issues.
No, I was looking, I want you to come in, thank you.
Yes, actually, I spoke to the school secretaries today. We had a meeting, and Ms. Cornwall and I have talked about the funding deadlines. Normally, district fines, we set a funding deadline, like a spending deadline for April 1st. And Ms. Cornwall is going to join me in that funding deadline for April 1st. So by April 1st, all the schools have already made their plans. They're finished for the year with spending, so Ms. Cornwall can make a better decision about what the carryover funds that are going to be left, and we can go ahead and begin our revisions to have those funds in place to hopefully make a purchase or an order before the year ends.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Holly and I be thinking sort alike sometimes. Thank you very much for clarifying that.
Yeah, sorry.
All right. Board members, do you have any other questions for Mr. JC? Thank you very much, Mr. Lawson, I appreciate it. You know, and hopefully you will get some additional tech employees to be working with you. A number of six people is a small staff for our district. That's just my thoughts right now. We're going to move on to the item D, CMSD-FY21, the audit report. You did get a copy of the audit reports before the last board meeting, and I'm sure you've had an opportunity to read over the report and the district administrators are currently, currently, what was I going to say, addressing it. Probably already have at this point, because that's been a couple of months ago, it's last month. So I'm sure that all the concerns, it was like one or two, I believe, have been already addressed. Anyone else have any comments about item D? Moving on to number five, open forum policy, BCBD. You do see a copy of our public comments, the board policy, BCAF. This is basically saying that the board selects to have open forum for the public to come in and to share their comments and et cetera. And tonight, we have with us Mrs. Hawkins. Welcome, Mrs. Hawkins, how are you?
Good evening, I'm Will. May I be very brief, because we've had this request before?
Yes, ma'am.
A little by myself, I'm a Columbus High graduate. I have three sons, two graduated, one is currently a freshman at Columbus High. Sir, my friend and I would like to open a dispensary to help serve the citizens that meet the requirements for the medical marijuana. And I choose this location because my father is the owner of this location. And being that there's a school church, a daycare, and almost, on almost every corner, the real estate is very limited on where we can open up in the city, and I would like to stay within the city limits to bring revenue into the city to support the schools or whatnot. That'd be, that's pretty much it, like I said, since we've come before the board before. I'd just like to be able to serve those that meet the state requirements to receive the medical cannabis for their conditions. Would there be any questions? Okay, I had silence last time.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry for this distraction. And I was listening to you, and I'm sure, you know, the rest of us were. At this time, I believe we did do a vote on this last month.
Megan.
We did a vote on this last month, we did, when you presented earlier. Yes, sir. Mr. Hemp Hill was here.
He was present. He told me that it came before the board, but he gave the advice that the board didn't have to vote up or down, that you call for a motion, and there was no motion, which is perfectly legal. You do not have to approve it, you don't even have to deny the request.
Yes, it was no motion. Is that what the minutes read? Yeah, the motion failed.
Right, there was no motion made, you know, never got to a motion.
Okay, there was not a motion made. So what do you recommend at this point?
I recommend the board either act to approve it, act to disapprove it, or do nothing. The statute says that you do not have to do anything, which in effect will mean that the approval will not be given, of course. But it's your choice.
All right, board, do you all, can they make any comments at this time? Any of the board members? Any comments? Well, what I'll do to make it official this time is to request a motion to approve. Following Robert Rules of Order, requesting a motion to approve. So there was no motion made for approval. Thank you very much, Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Dunn, and going back to item D? Okay, I was not aware that someone was calling in. Please forgive me. So if we can go back to item D?
Ms. St. Clair, the auditor for the FY21 school year is on the line to answer any questions, to go over anything the board may have any questions or concerns about concerning the audit report. We did receive an unmodified opinion, which was one of our goals.
Yes.
But there were findings that we've addressed.
Great, is she still online?
Yes. Megan, can you hear us?
I am here.
Oh, Ms. St. Clair?
Yes.
Yes, I apologize for not being there in person. There was a conflict, I had a, I had a vacation planned, and I was going to be in Orange Beach. So I apologize for not being able to attend in person.
Well, thank you, thank you for holding and being as patient as you are. This is Yvonne Cox, really appreciate your work that you do for the district. Do you have any comments that you'd like to share with us at this time?
Did you want me to go over?
Well, the board members have had an opportunity to read the document very thoroughly. We've given them copies when you sent it to us. And at this time, board members, do you all have any questions, concerns, or comments? Dr. Schumate?
I just wanted to clarify with Ms. Rogers. You said that all the things that had been brought up in the report have been taken care of, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Is the part of the correction- It's a part of the correction action plan that we have to respond with what we're going to be doing to correct what it was. And the notification that they wanted us to respond most to is whenever we have an item that's supposed to meet a bid or quote requirement, that I don't even approve the requisition until all of their documentation is uploaded into the system. I can no longer take the word that, yes, we did get this backup documentation. They may have received the documentation, it wasn't submitted, and then at the audit time could not be located. So, all of that will already be in the business department before any approval takes place.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mrs. St. Clair. Appreciate your time.
Oh, you're welcome.
All right, thank you all for bringing that to our attention. Appreciate it. We're moving on to item six, Office of the Intrude Superintendent, Mr. Dennis Dupree. Mr. Dupree, have you had any travel?
No, I don't have any travel for A or B.
He has no travel at this time. We'll move on to item B. I think I'm going too fast. Item B, consideration and a discussion to approve personnel items, requesting the motion to approve our personnel items.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mr. Sparks, requesting a second. Second. Second by Mrs. Young. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimous. Moving on to item number two, consideration and a discussion to approve the revised behavior specialist job descriptions for general education and special education. Requesting a motion to approve both job descriptions.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mrs. Young. Excuse me, Dr. Brown. Excuse me, Dr. Brown. Requesting a second. Second. Second by Mrs. Young. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving on to item three, consideration and a discussion to approve the recommended administrative personnel.
So moved.
The motion is made by Dr. Brown, requesting a second. Second. Second by Mrs. Young. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes, it's unanimous. Let me get my notes straight. Moving on to item seven, Office of the Business Management, CMSD Business Administration, requesting a motion to approve, and thank you very much for the individual reports for June, July, August and September. The monthly financials, requesting a motion to approve the fund balance, cash balance, budget status, monthly revenues, monthly expenditures, and certification and summary of reconciled bank statements, requesting a motion to approve.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mrs. Young, requesting a second. Second. Second by Dr. Brown. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to item nine, the monthly ad valorem tax collection analysis report. Board, do you have any comments, questions at this time? If no questions at this time, we'll move on. Use my notes. To item H, fund balance trends. We're just smiling. We've been reading stuff all week. It's great. Bank cash balance yearly comparison reports, report. The athletic event report. Requesting a motion to, for consideration and a discussion to approve the budget amendment, fixed access, asset disposals, except the donation, fixed access and the claim documents. Requesting a motion to approve, item K.
So moved.
All right, thank you, Ms. Young. Requesting a second. Second. Second, Dr. Brown. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving on. Item O, federal programs and IDEA monthly financial reviews. Any questions, concerns concerning the federal programs and IDEA monthly reviews? If no questions, ma'am? Moving on to our consent agenda, which is item, item eight, policy BCBL. We have policies that I like for us to look at. The first policy is a new policy and that's policy IN. And then I'd like for you to look at item B, the current recommended policies, which is number one through 14, requesting approval.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mr. Sparks, requesting a second. Second. Second by Dr. Brown. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving on. Thank you all.
Ms. Cox?
Yes, sir.
In reading the agenda here?
Yes, sir.
I think we moved a little fast on that one.
Okay.
Item one reads, discussion of the following policies to be approved during the November 14th, 2022 board meeting. So, I mean.
Explain to me what you're saying. Are you saying the current recommended policies?
No, 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 no. So, read item one under the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Item one, discussion of the following policies to be approved during the November 14th. So, the way that reads, I think this is the time that we continue to review for the November meeting. Am I reading that correctly? So, today was basically.
We don't approve it? Okay. I always have noticed us approving the reading of it in my notes. But thank you very much. From now on, we won't approve the reading of it.
So, we've already, we've already approved it?
Yes, sir. Have we? Yeah, we did. I'm moving on. So, from now on, we won't approve the reading of it. That's what, that's what he's asking.
If the discussion. Rescind, rescind, right, we need to rescind it.
So, we need a motion to rescind the action that you took to approve all of it.
Yes, sir. I'm requesting a motion to rescind those actions.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mr. Sparks, requesting a second. Second. Second is by Dr. Brown. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Okay, we got that in our notes that that was rescinded. Okay, now I'll move on to item B. And that's consideration and a discussion to approve the revised policy, GBREB, the staff incentives, requesting a motion to approve. So moved. The motion is made by Dr. Schumate, requesting a second. Second. Second by Mrs. Young. Any discussion? Was this one up last month for review? No, ma'am.
This is one that you already had. All we did because of COVID, we did not give out any funds and, you know, the next year they just carried it, right, skipped. So, all we're doing is just moving the year over. So, we want to be able to pay out some funds this time.
Okay.
So, the money doesn't change just a year?
Yeah, just update the timeline.
I don't need any phone calls.
If you all look at the policy itself, it sort of says that. Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Definitely. It's unanimous. Okay, item C, consideration and a discussion to approve agreements, contracts, memorandum of understandings, out-of-state travel, field trips and student transfers. At this time, board, I'm requesting approval for number one, which is the organizational chart. Number two, the strategic plan. Three, Salvation Army donations. So, that would be number one through seven. Number one through 18, ending with Perry Weathers Terms and Agreement of Software and Outdoor Warning Systems. Requesting a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion is made by Mr. Sparks, requesting a second. Second. Dr. Brown? Yes, ma'am. Any discussion? Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, I think I'm fumbling here with this. Board, please pay attention to item D, dates to remember, policy BCBD. The parent teacher conference day report cards and progress reports. The athletics extracurricular activities and the next board, board meeting, which is November, board minute meetings, November 14th. And the change will be at 8:30 a.m. You have any comments or questions concerning these items, board? Moving on to item nine, requesting a motion to move into, for closed determination, excuse me, closed determination for executive session, policy BCBK. I'll make the motion. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, we are in closed determination for executive session. I'll be out in a minute.
Back into our regular session that was action taken um regarding community matters and the minutes was approved. Requesting a motion to adjourn.
Let's go move.
Motion is made by Ms. Spock requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Brown. Any discussion? The note, the note discussion, I can say it's been regulated.